Called this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texans Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is now six o'clock. Please join me with Mr. Kidd leading us in the invocation and Mr. Moore in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would like to, please bow your heads and join me in prayer. Dear heaven and father, just thank you, Lord, for loving us. Thank you for your grace. Thank you for your forgiveness. Lord, we just pray specifically for those that are here tonight and just thank you for those teachers, instructors, those that are with our district, Lord, and their hearts for our students and their hearts for service and the impact that those leaders on those campuses have. Lord, we just thank you and we ask for your directions and guidance and strength. Dear Lord, we specifically thank you for the students that are here tonight and just the example that they've been in representing this district. And we just pray, Lord, that you be with the students throughout our district as we finish strong this spring and just we ask for just your protection. Dear God, specifically for tonight, also, we ask for guidance and direction in the business to be done and just thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight and just watch over this meeting, help it be productive. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the youth of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd and Mr. Moore. I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Stockton for our awards and recognition.
Great, we're going to start out, this is going to be an exciting evening, I think, for everybody in the room. We're going to start out tonight inviting Mr. Colson up to the podium, principal of the Woodlands High School, to introduce our coach, who will introduce our recipients.
This is Bush, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here to recognize a very special group of young ladies. But before we do that, I want to thank you for the opportunities that you continue to provide our students both academically and extracurricularly. It all works together and provides a well-rounded school experience for our students. So, no further ado, I'd like to introduce the Texas 6A State Coach of the Year, Kent Kirchner.
Thank you very much. It's truly an honor to be here. I'd like to thank the Lord for bringing my wife and our family here 18 years ago. And my wife is right over here. If she'd please stand up. I don't want to waste too much time here, but we're coming up on our 35th anniversary. That's pretty amazing to me and other people that know me. First, I'd like to introduce our ladies here that did just an amazing job this year at the Texas State High School Swimming and Diving Championship. Valerie Ann Staffelt, please stand up there and come right over here. And Lilly, Lilly Nordman, Emily Reese, Lucy Nordman, Caitlin, I can't think of her name, Caitlin or Neer, Vivian Yu, Carson Fields, Sidney Reitkaff, Kate Neff, and our assistant coach, Katie Tom. These young ladies, just to give you a brief description of what happened at the state meet, we talked about before the meet started, I said that every spot's going to be important. Every point's important. And going down to the 400 freestyle relay, which is the last event, we were tied. And whoever wins the last relay wins the meet. And I knew we had it, didn't we? Anyway, they set a new state record in that relay, too, at the end. And I also'd like to thank Mr. Colson for being one of my best assistant coaches I've ever had at the school. And the one thing he told me after we took our plunge into the water after the state meet was over, he came up and his first words to me were, "Boy, this is cold." So, anyway, without further ado, this is our state championship team. And the next thing I'm going to recognize is our state championship record. I'm sorry? Go ahead, absolutely. Cut in whenever you like. Just, no, cut in whenever you liked it.
I just, we want to present this plaque on behalf of the Board of Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Stockton to the Woodlands High School Girls Swimming Team, 2017 6A State Champions. We say congratulations to everyone at the meet.
Stay right there, Ray. Next, our next item on the agenda here is the 200 medley relay, state record holder, record holders, excuse me. Lucy Nordman, step forward. Carson Fields, step forward. Emily Reese, step forward. And Valerie Ann Staffelt, step forward, please. They actually broke the state records twice. They did it in the prelims and then they came back and did it again in the finals. But it only counts one time. Okay, go ahead.
You're all great record breakers in our league, anyway. Again, we just want to present this reward, award, on behalf of the Woodlands High School Girls 200-yard medley relay team, congratulations.
Thank you. Dr. Stockton, I'm sorry, but you said to keep it short. I'm trying. I'm trying. The 400 freestyle relay, state record holder, set a new state record in the 400 freestyle relay at that last event, Lucy Nordman, Emily Reese, Lilly Nordman, and Kate Neff. Two 400 freestyle relay state record.
Yeah, I'm trying to read without my glasses, but I'm doing pretty good. My arms are long enough. The Woodlands High School Girls 400-yard freestyle relay team, congratulations, 6A State Champions. We're proud of you. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach. We're getting there. We got one more. Two, okay. Well, it goes to the same person. Next, we have a state record holder, a state record breaker, in the 50 freestyle and state champion, and also the 100 backstroke state champion. She broke two state records in those two events, too. Lucy Nordman. We really appreciate the board recognizing us at this time. That's basically, I'm done right now. Unless you want me to go on. Okay. Okay.
Congratulations.
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 Good job, Chris.
We appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
35 years, good job, man.
There we go.
Thank you for all you do.
We appreciate you.
Ms. Godfrey, Godfrey, sorry. Has anyone registered to address the board?
No.
All right. If no one opposes, we're going to actually move item nine up on our agenda to before the consent agenda. So, item nine A, name principal of Anderson Elementary School, Dr. Stockton.
All right, well, thank you very much. This is always a joy and a pleasure for me to recommend principals to the board for their approval. And this is not done without a lot of thought. And, you know, throughout the year, we look at different positions, we look at different people, we put a lot of thought into it. Sometimes it also involves transfers of people and those types of things. But I am really, really excited about what we have tonight, who we have tonight to present to you. The first one is naming the principal of Anderson Elementary School. And I am very pleased to recommend Laura Kionis, who's currently the assistant principal at Patterson Elementary School. So, I present her for your approval.
I move approval. Second.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you. President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. I feel like in the Oscars, so don't play the music, okay? It is with great joy that I stand before you to thank you for the honor of this opportunity. My parents and siblings couldn't be here today, but my best friend, husband, love of my life, and Colorado ISD teacher is here with me, Cesar Delgado, so he can stand up. He has laughed and supported me every step of the way in my career and dreams. Also, my mentor, Mr. Lozano, and his wife are here tonight to support me. He is to thank for molding me into the leader I have become and aspire to be. I'm also grateful to be joined by my really good friends who have become my core family. Thank you. Ten years ago, I exchanged my geometry class with high school students in Juarez for a classroom full of five-year-old students here in Colorado ISD at Anderson Elementary. As scary as it sounds, I survived the whole year and succeeded the second one. Then I joined one of the best fourth-grade teams in the district. It was an intimidating moment. I was going to be teaching with great teachers, some with more than 30 years of experience, but I was successful with their unconditional love and unwavering guidance. Later, I became the instructional campus coach. Leaving the classroom was tough, but thanks to the teachers' trust in me, I was able to grow as a leader. Sometime after, I became a district math coach in Patterson's AP. And again, it was a scary moment because I was leaving Anderson, my house. I was able to succeed, thanks to the love and support of my dear Patterson family. Today should be another scary moment, but it is not. I'm going back home, confident of great team success to come. I will try my very best doing what Anderson taught me. If you do things with love and passion, you will succeed. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, moving to, I am equally as excited to recommend to you Natalie Buckley, who's currently the assistant principal at Burnham Woods, to be the new principal at Burnham Woods.
Move for approval? Motion.
All those in favor? Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Board President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, I would like to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to serve as principal of Burnham Woods Elementary. I would also like to thank my family members who are here, my husband of almost 25 years, Mike, my parents, Debbie and Tommy, and one, I can't look at them. Don't look at them. And one of my boys, Blake, my other son, is off at school this week, working really hard, so he couldn't be here today. I started out in Conroe ISD as a second-grade teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, and I've had the privilege of being at Burnham Woods for the last five years. I'm very eager and excited to continue to work with an amazing staff and school community. And as an instructional leader, I pledge to continue to foster a culture that's going to expect high levels of academic achievement, value those meaningful relationships, and of course, support the core values of CISD. So, I look forward to the challenge that lies ahead and, once again, just thank you for this opportunity to serve CISD in this capacity.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving to our next, my next recommendation, this is for Bosman Intermediate School. We already have one vote. I am very pleased and honored to recommend Amber DeBomat, who's currently an assistant principal there, to be the principal.
All right. They haven't voted yet, so.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, congratulations.
President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be the principal in a district that I love with all my heart and have called home for the past eight years. Tonight is a time to celebrate not just myself, but the people who love and support me here around. My husband Troy is one of the love of my life, but he has my biggest fan and someone that never lets a day pass without making me smile. Our greatest accomplishment is our son, Cooper, future Conroe Tiger Class of 2033. He chose Mickey Mouse tonight and grabbed mine instead of coming. He has my heart and my love, girl, is for him to always be proud to call me his mommy. Thank you to my dad, brother Aaron, and his girlfriend, Carla, for coming tonight. Their support means a lot to me. My kinfolk family, Chris, Lucy, and Martin George, the greatest people a girl ever made could ask for. They not only bring a monster to our lives, but they love and support us endlessly. Lucy, thank you for being my best friend, sister, and always believing in me. Mr. Now, his name is Mr. Mike Now, he is a dear friend of mine and he's also my partner in mentoring our boys. And so, I want to thank him for all of his support. A special thank you to all the principals I've worked for in San Luis D, Dr. Curtis Now, Dr. Mark Waddell, Gail Drummond, Tasha Smith, and Bethany McFid. I don't think I remember that's anybody other than that. Dr. Curtis Now, thank you for honoring me and giving me the opportunity to be part of the San Luis D family. You have bonded me since day one and admire me as a person and a leader. Thank you for mentoring me and helping me grow as a leader. I just want to let everyone in this room know that dreams do come true. Started out as the fecu first little girl from Big City, Texas, who had a dream of going to Texas A&amp;M and being an educator one day. The most amazing thing about that is, yes, I'm an Aggie. But the most amazing thing about that is, there was a number of trials and challenges that dreams do come true. I am overjoyed and honored to be the principal of Bosman Intermediate. I promise to always work hard, be humble, challenge myself and others, cherish every day and have fun. I will never let a day pass without all Bosman children and staff members knowing they are supported and cared for. Thank you so much for me allowing the opportunity to help children and teachers build their best day in a day out. God bless.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on. I am also very excited to recommend the new principal for Travis Intermediate School, and that is Sharita Smith, who's currently an assistant principal at Ford Elementary School.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
Good evening to President Bush, members of the board. Dr. Stockton, I am so honored and very blessed to be named the next principal of Travis Intermediate School. I look forward to serving the students, parents, community, and school staff. This is a tremendous opportunity and I will not disappoint or let you down. I really couldn't do the work that I do without the help and support of my wonderful family. Here tonight is my husband, Darius, my daughter, Taylor, my mother, Charlotte, my mother-in-law, Phyllis, my cousin, Sharon, and my aunt Cheryl, and my uncle, Derek. Thank you so much for your love and your support. I would also like to thank, this is my second year in CISD, and so I would like to thank my principal, Mrs. Gorman, for giving me that opportunity from an outsider to come in to this awesome district. And I would like to really thank her and for her support and my Ford family. I really appreciate you all so much. So, CISD, y'all have me now, been in two years, and here to stay. Many thanks.
Before we move forward with our agenda, I do want to say again, congratulations to all of you. I'm sure you want to go celebrate. You are welcome to leave or you're welcome to stay, but now's the opportunity if you want to slide away.
Rest of the meeting's not quite as fast.
I'll be late.
Weird war.
Pretty much.
Guys, let's add score.
None of it very interesting, but.
Except for those guys that like to talk about money. Yeah, numbers and improving projects.
Y'all want to stay and hear the budget?
I was going to say. Nobody stays.
See the financials.
Don't you want to, don't you want to stay and listen to the financials?
I think we're, we're good.
Okay. So, item three, consent agenda, I haven't heard any requests to remove everything.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
I second the motion.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item four A, consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price amendment for a new intermediate school in the Oak Ridge feeder zone, Flex 18 project, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute the contract documents, Dr. Stockton.
Okay, easy. Foster, would you come and present that item, please?
President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure to bring forward tonight for your consideration and approval, a guaranteed maximum price amendment for our new intermediate school in the Oak Ridge feeder zone, which we'll refer to as Flex 18. On August 18th, we, the district, selected Marshall Construction to be our construction manager at risk for a new intermediate school, Flex 18. Since then, we've advertised and taken bids from the trade market. Based on Marshall Construction's proposal for this work, we've negotiated a guaranteed maximum price for Flex 18 of $25,491,428. Our outside council is preparing our contract documents and at this time, we're requesting your approval.
Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Second. Any discussion? All right.
Nope.
All those.
I'm sorry, I have, I'm sorry. I was just trying to catch up. I almost missed it. Sorry about that. So, the Flex 18, the one question I had was about size. Will it be a K through five or K through six? All right, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, five, six.
Five, six. That's what I meant. It'd be four, five, six?
Five, six.
Five, six. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Item four B, consider approval for the guaranteed maximum price amendment for the district-wide safety and security upgrades project phase two.
At this time, I request your approval of phase two GMP for our district-wide safety and security project. Back in March of 2016, we selected Ellisor Constructors to be our construction manager at risk for our district-wide safety and security project. The project's set up for phasing so we can use lessons learned from each phase as we move forward into future phases and better facilitate working throughout the district. During phase one, we didn't expend all of our allowances contingencies and realized a little bit of savings, so portion of this is funded from that amount from phase one. So, using that as part of the funding, the total GMP for phase two is $3,914,677. At this time, our outside council is preparing those documents and we're requesting your approval.
All right, motion?
No.
Second. All right, any discussion?
I have, again, I have a question. Will this complete the safety and security of all the vestibules?
Not exactly.
I don't think so. What will be left, I guess, I'm trying to, and how did we decide which ones would and wouldn't be a part of this? I understand that.
Well, in phase one, we tried to get the lowest hanging fruit, the easiest vestibules to secure.
Exactly, I remember that.
And we did 17 of those last, last in phase one.
Right.
Phase two, there's only five security vestibules, but we're now going back to get more of the low-hanging fruit for cameras and other things.
Okay.
Plus, as we're doing capital improvements at other campuses with other contracts, we're also carrying a lot of the scope for the safety and security upgrades there.
Okay.
So, we're trying to be efficient as we go through.
So, right, okay, you answered my question. Because so, as we do the other capital projects, we're just including that as a part of that safety and security?
Yes, sir.
Got it, thank you. When's your start date and when, how long does a project usually take?
Well, these projects are fluid. They do their work overnight, and so they're working through, we've got 16 or 15 campuses to work on in phase two. And as soon as we get the contract documents in, the bonds settled, everything in, they'll go to work immediately and overnight.
So, you don't need to wait till summertime? Y'all start this.
No, a lot of this work is above ceiling. They can do work, clean up, and be gone before school starts the next day.
Okay. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
All right, anything else? All right, all those opposed, or all those in favor?
You can do it that way, too.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Capital improvement updates. Mr. Foster.
At this time, I'd like to bring you an update on our capital improvements that we have underway throughout the district. I'm going to start you with College Park, which our road.
and Security Project. Back in March of 2016, we selected Ellisore Constructors to be our construction manager at risk for our district-wide Safety and Security Project. The project's set up for phasing so we can use lessons learned from each phase as we move forward into future phases and better facilitate working throughout the district. During Phase One, we didn't expend all of our allowances contingencies and realized a little bit of savings, so a portion of this is funded from that amount from Phase One. So using that as a part of the funding, the total GMP for Phase Two is $3,914,677. At this time, our outside council is preparing those documents, and we're requesting your approval.
All right, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Again, I have a question. Will this complete the safety and security of all the vestibules?
Not exactly.
I think so. What will be left, I guess, I'm trying to... And how did we decide which ones would and wouldn't be a part of this? I understand that.
Well, in Phase One, we tried to get the lowest hanging fruit, the easiest vestibules to secure.
Exactly, I remember that.
And we did 17 of those last, in Phase One.
Right.
Phase Two, there's only five security vestibules, but we're now going back to get more of the low hanging fruit for cameras and other things.
Okay.
Plus, as we're doing capital improvements at other campuses with other contracts, we're also carrying a lot of the scope for the safety and security upgrades there.
That's...
So, we're trying to be efficient as we go through.
So, right, okay, you answered my question. Because so as we do the other capital projects, we're just including that as a part of that in safety and security?
Yes.
Got it, thank you. When's your start date, and when do you... How long does a project usually take?
Well, these projects are fluid. They do their work overnight, and so they're working through... We've got 16 or 15 campuses to work on in Phase Two, and as soon as we get the contract documents in, the bond's settled, everything in, they'll go to work immediately and overnight.
So you don't need to wait till summertime? Y'all start this...
No, a lot of this work is above ceiling. They can do work, clean up, and be gone before school starts the next day.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
All right, anything else? All right, all those opposed? Or, all those in favor?
You can do it that way, too.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Capital improvement updates, Mr. Foster.
At this time, I'd like to bring you an update on our capital improvements that we have underway throughout the district. I'm gonna start you with College Park, which is our robotics project. This one's one that each month I've been reporting, the rain and weather has been a severe detriment here. The rain leading up to spring break did actually influence our ability to receive furniture and all that over spring break. Since then, over the break, since we did have some good weather, we did get the building in a dry condition. So what you're seeing here are the windows installed, the brickwork, the scaffolding is in place, and things are starting to progress with the sun shining. So the north face of the building, which faces 242, is also scaffold and ready, the windows are in, roof is done, things of that nature. So the work on the inside is actually progressing at a rapid rate. So what we're looking at now is a white box getting ready for paint and other finishes to go in.
We were there on our last tour, it was quite impressive.
I appreciate that, and I know the contractor well as well. Now, the interesting part, since we have had weather issues, all of the materials needed to complete this project are onsite. I mean, so we're not waiting on carpet, not waiting on windows, not waiting on doors. Everything is ready, so as they're finishing the project, it will proceed rapidly from this point. At our Network Operations Center, which is our data infrastructure for the entire district, the data center itself is nearing its stage where we're getting ready to install the racks and all the other nice things that hold switch gears and/or switches and network operating gear for us. We spent the break doing a lot of electrical infrastructure work on the building itself. We did run this building on generator power for four days during the week of spring break, so we were able to get a lot of the original switch gear that's original to this building replaced in preparation. Now we're working with the utility company to upgrade our transformer, upgrade our utilities to the building to accommodate this new data center. The project is on schedule. You're looking now, the finishes are coming along in the offices and corridors and other things, so we are nearing the time over the next couple months. We'll be receiving the technology equipment itself, working on the install, and getting the backup generators and things of that nature installed and wired up. On our lifecycle 2017 project, this one had no pictures up until this month. Now we're actively roofing two buildings. Gladys Elementary and Bush Elementary are receiving new roof, so you're seeing the materials are staged. They've been working in the overnight hours from 3:30 to about 10:30 during spring break. They did work during the day, we're going back to the overnight hours this week. So those roofs are progressing as we would expect them with those type of working conditions. We've also, over spring break, redid the cafeteria floors at two of our elementary schools, at Creighton Elementary, and again, at Anderson Elementary. So those were replacing rubber floors that were at the end of their lifecycle, and these are multi-use spaces, basically cafeteria tables, PE classes, things of that nature, so the new floors were indeed needed. In addition to that, we also did the structural coating and are getting ready to re-straight the track at Candy Creek, and did some work for the softball program at Candy Creek High School. At Knox Junior High and the Woodlands Transportation Center project, at Knox, we're adding a 10 classroom science addition, so over spring break, we got the foundations completely installed this lab board, as you're seeing here. The work at the fieldhouse, which is expanding the showers and other facilities to match the student population at that school, is progressing well. They started drilling the foundations for the building extension today. Over at the transportation center, the inside of the existing building is nearing the point where we're getting ready for finishes. They drilled the foundations for that building expansion today as well. Their project overall is on schedule, scheduled to turn over for students to use in August of this coming summer. Our Safety and Security Project, Phase One, is what we're completing. Our team, technology, and our contractor are still commissioning. We've installed a lot of cameras and front door entries at 17 locations, so they're in the process of commissioning each one of those camera views. There are approximately 1,000 cameras installed, so it's a bit of a tedious task to get that all online and working. Now, we just approved Phase Two, so Phase Two, I'll get you a generic picture of one of our programs for... Talk about progress for that next month. At Lucille Bradley Elementary, that's Flex 17, it opens in August of 2017. This project is on schedule, scheduled to turn over for us to occupy and furnish this summer, early in the summer, in June. So the project is right where we would expect it to be. The roofing, the materials are complete, the brickwork and masonry is worked all the way around to the front door, and the masonry is expected to be finished in the next 30 days. On the inside, the finishes, the casework, the cabinets, the light fixtures, the ceilings, all those things are coming in. They're beginning the process of operating and starting the air conditioning systems and all the other systems going in. Technology goes in in April, and then we'll work to get it ready for occupancy through May and into June. As you can see, it is coming along very well, it is cleaning up nicely, and everything is progressing just as we would expect. At Grand Oaks High School, this project is also on schedule, scheduled to open for students in August of 2018. You can see here, the building structure, as we reported last month, is largely complete. The roofing section at the front in the three-story academic wing is complete, and they're working the roof back towards the fine arts and athletics areas of the building, towards the rear of the site. The athletics infrastructure is also going, beginning over the next month or so, so you'll start seeing the football fields develop, the softball fields, and those things over the next several weeks. Inside that building, those building systems are coming together, so the mechanical equipment, the piping systems, the blockwork, the corridors, the classrooms, the admin areas. What we're looking at here is a peek from up high into our CTE area for one of the computer labs that will be serving our students. And then on the other, from another perspective, we're looking kind of back into our fine arts area, we're looking into the band and practice areas where we're gonna see a lot of our fine arts students develop. And that is our update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster. Item five A, finance reports, Dr. Stockton.
Darren Rice, please. You can hear the excitement about your financial report.
I know, I was fixing to say, Mr. Rice. Excited! Should we invite him back in?
Just for you.
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. It is my pleasure to present the financial statements for the district for the month of February. These statements will include our general fund, debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at this evening is the balance sheet. The balance sheet includes our assets, liabilities, and fund balances. Each month, we like to look at our cash and investments. Look at the detail here, we're concentrating on the general fund. We have cash on hand of $500. We have bank deposits of $345,000. We have investments in our pools of $208 million. Other investments are investments less than a year of $73.5 million. And our longer-term investments with TCG Investment Advisors of $51.1 million for total cash and investments of $333.5 million. Property taxes, always like to look at our tax collection progress. 96.02%, we're ahead of where we were last year, so feeling really good about our collections. The next statement we'll look at is our income statement. The income statement includes our revenues and expenditures. Revenues include local and intermediate sources. The largest items in there are tax revenues that we receive for the general fund and debt service fund. We have state program revenues, federal program revenues. And then we can also look, if I can find my cursor, here it is, at our year-to-date expenditures by major category for each of the funds. In the general fund, of course, the largest expenditure is payroll. Even went backwards there. Projected fund balance for the general fund has not changed from last month, about an increase of about $5.1 million. Same for debt service, we're looking at an increase of about $882,000, and a slight increase in child nutrition of $81,000. Our 2015 bond referendum status update, we've currently expended and encumbered $248.5 million. We have an estimate to complete of $268.8 million, giving us a project forecast of $517.3 million, leaving us with about $2.9 million worth of contingency. Self-funded insurance, once again, we had another good month in February. We had total revenues of $3,799,000, total expenses of $3,29,000. For revenues over expenses, $769,000. For the year, our revenues over expenses are $3.2 million. And as y'all know, if we stopped the plan right now, we would have runoff of about $4.6 million, so our goal was to make the fund sound, so we're about $1.4 million short of that goal, but we're trekking the right way. Our investments for the month, at the end of the month, our par value was $602 million. The WHAM of our pools was one day, and they're yielding 88 and a half basis points. The WHAM of our other investments, once again, this is our shorter-term investments, a year or less, is 133 days, 133 days, and we're yielding 1.16%. Our WHAM with TCG Investment Advisors is 550 days, this is our longer-term investments, and they're yielding 1.10%. So the WHAM of the combined portfolio was 60 days, and we're yielding 94 basis points. And our benchmark, which is the 90-day T-bill, is at 50 basis points.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Questions? Thank you. Item six, executive session, we already took care of naming the principals, so we get to move forward to item eight A, Consider Local Policy Manual Update, Ms. Gladys.
Thank you, President Bush. As you know, you received update 107 to review over spring break, which we all poured over in great detail. And so I probably won't be telling you anything you didn't already know. The majority of changes are to legal policies, which is typical of our updates these days. The majority of these changes are from new administrative code regulations and further implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act. One of the provisions from Every Student Succeeds that's impacting several policies is the requirement that all schools have policies that prohibit an employee from doing anything to enable another employee, a former employee, or a contractor from getting a job in another capacity if the current employee has any reason to believe or knowledge that that employee has engaged in sexual misconduct with a student or minor. And so those provisions have been added to legal and local policies. Another policy impacted by this update is DBD, that is the Employee Conflicts of Interest Policy. It contains a myriad of provisions that deal with conflicts. The change to this one deals with holding civil office. They added further detail to clarify that teachers, retired teachers, retired school administrators aren't prohibited by the Texas Constitution from holding office, like on a city or a government board. Typically, the prohibition would be if you get some of your income from Texas funds, you couldn't serve on a board like that, but they have an exception for educators who are retired, serving on boards of that type. DBD is also, you know, the policy that deals with conflicts of interest, and it explains and the legal requirements that prohibit vendors from giving gifts to employees, and that prohibits employees or members of employees' families from accepting gifts from vendors. All the changes to local policies are detailed in your agenda item, and so if you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to answer them. And then there's two additional policies I'd like to point out. As you know, you all approved the district becoming a district of innovation, and as a result of that, we had to make some changes or add a couple policies. One is saying that we are a district of innovation, that's in AF. And finally, EB, which is the policy that talks about when the start date of the school year is under state law, since we are exempting ourselves from that, that policy will now contain a link to our District of Innovation Plan, which is on the website, so that anybody looking at that policy could go right there and find what rule applies to us now. So we'll be bringing back... I told you in the note I sent you when I sent you this, that staff is still reviewing the changes. I don't think we're gonna have very many, but if they're additional, I will send them to you prior to the April meeting, because at that meeting, we'll be asking you to adopt the local policies contained in 107.
All right, any questions? Motion to adjourn?
Second.